We've just been looking for an opportunity to be more involved with projects that are going on around Fullerton. I drive up.
Well, that's not Coast to Coast.
Let me do this first. Alyssa, I don't know.
Two errors.
Good evening, Mayor Chafee and members of the council. Corporal J.D. DiCaprio here. I've been a police officer in this city for approximately 28 years. And for those that don't know, I've been assigned working with the homeless for the past 12 years. I'm honored to be here tonight. This is a great opportunity to give you a brief update of kind of what we've been doing. I wear two different hats in this city. When I'm a police officer, obviously, I'm out working with the homeless. And when I'm not in uniform, I'm out volunteering my time with Coast to Coast Foundation. I've been coordinating with them since 2009. And just to tell you a little bit about the organization, Coast to Coast came along at a time when we were really lacking resources in the community for the homeless. And since then, we started to collaborate on different issues and different needs. And I just want to talk a little bit about some of the things that Coast to Coast Foundation does for the homeless while they're on the program. It's not just myself, but I have three other partners. So it's a team of four who work various day and evenings throughout the week. So we have seven days of coverage. But when we come across homeless folks that are in need, Coast to Coast Foundation will provide for us bus passes when needed. They'll provide for us $5 gift cards to the local restaurants when we come across someone who's obviously hungry and can't make it to a feed that day. One of the other programs that they're very helpful in providing for us is a motel voucher program. And we primarily use that for two different reasons. If we come across a mother and young children and we need a place to put them up for a night or two, that's extremely important because sometimes it takes quite a bit of time for us to get resources in place typically throughout the county of Orange. So between the bus pass, the food vouchers, the motel vouchers, those we use on a regular basis. On my off time, I feed with Coast to Coast. We're down in the Palmer Park at one of their off-site locations that the city has designated down there across from the park. And we do what's called a sack lunch program. We feed the first and third Sunday of every month. We start our feed at 2:30 and we prepare approximately 200 sack lunches right there at that location. And it all gets done within about an hour. Aside from that, one of our focuses is actually on the three main holidays throughout the year being Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. During those times, we prepare hot meals. And this year for Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, we prepared around 500 to 600 hot meals at each of those feeds. We typically have 60 to 80 volunteers, sometimes as many as 200 volunteers that show up at those locations on those dates. So that's just a little bit about some of the programs. Recently, we had some of our folks here in the city reach out to our brothers and sisters in Anaheim and talk to them a little bit about their homeless population and what they're doing down in their city. I was called into the city of Anaheim to attend a couple of their meetings. And out of that, they created a program very similar to our outreach program in this city. They actually assigned immediately eight officers to help with the homeless in their city. So we're collaborating closely with them. One of the programs that Coast to Coast, we really pride ourselves on, is each and every day, I'm out there interacting with homeless people. And on certain given occasions, I do run into people that have options. And in talking with them, if it appears that there's an option of reuniting them back with family or friends, we actually, through Coast to Coast Foundation and the money we've raised, we actually send them back to family or friends. And that can include anything from a bus trip to wherever they're going, or as of recently, we put a young lady on an airplane and sent her back to family. So we make the initial contact with the family and ensure that they're going to take them in. And then we provide the money for the transportation for that. So I have some numbers here. In the last, well, basically since '09, we've placed approximately 12 people back with family or friends. And out of those 12, none of them, to my knowledge, and I keep in contact with quite a few of them, none of them have returned back to the state of homelessness. So, you know, with that program, you know, we consider that the perfect storm, 100% success rate. We obviously can't do that with everybody because not everybody has those options. But certainly when we come across somebody who is willing and able and has those resources in place, then we want to be able to have the money set aside to make that happen. So that's one of our key programs. Just in the last couple of months with our collaboration with the officers down in Anaheim, and I'm working very closely with them, obviously mentoring some of their programs down there. But Anaheim has stepped up and through Coast to Coast Foundation is also supporting their program. They have reunited four of their homeless people back with family or friends. And they completed that relocation. So we're pretty proud of that. And we're proud that we're working closely with the city of Anaheim. We're well aware that when it came time to open the Army, that it wasn't just our city that stepped up with extra funding to get open early. But it was Anaheim that met that same obligation and we were able to open it early. So I think some of these things are definitely groundbreaking. They're historical. And these are the kind of things that we want to build on. The best I can tell you is, you know, the only way to get out there and, you know, find out what the needs are is to come out and volunteer. So some of the people here in the audience, some of the people up at the dais have been out to volunteer with us. Open that invitation to everybody. The first and third Sunday at the Palmer Park, 2:30 in the afternoon, everybody's welcome. And then, of course, I know it's on the holiday, but if perhaps family permits and you come out on Easter, Thanksgiving, or Christmas, we'd love to have you come out there. We do do a couple fundraisers during the course of the year. Those fundraisers are really what makes this possible. And the other thing I wanted to mention is Coast to Coast Foundation is 100% volunteer-based. So there's absolutely nobody on payroll. So all the money that comes in goes right back into our community, or in the case of Anaheim, we're working with them now. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Marie, before you sit down, Marie, do you want to introduce yourself? And make sure you tell everybody, unless the mayor is going to, about your fundraiser this Saturday. Right?
This is the founder of Coast to Coast.
It's a privilege and an honor to serve the community. It's all about service and I'm glad we're in a platform that we can actually give service to everybody that needs help. And with your support, we can grow programs, put everything back into the community. So we do appreciate the continued support and all of our projects that we're trying to expand, especially into Anaheim, which there's a huge need there too that we do in this city. I'm grateful and thank you. And we do have a fundraiser if you want to support us. It's this Saturday. It's casino night over at the Tuscany Club. It's 4 to 8 if you guys can make it. If not, we'd like to take donations online all the time. So thank you so much.
Do you feel strong enough to tear some paper? I must explain, you will not find my name on a parking space out there in the VIP spaces. Rather, I've chosen to give up my space to volunteer of the month. So you have an official space, no reserve for councilperson. You are among the VIPs. This will go up on February 1. You are the volunteer of the month for February. Now, I have to remark a few more things. You are the principal source of creating Coast to Coast. You continue with your time. Among the things you do, you have a garage somewhere. And you fill that garage with blankets and water and jackets and anything that homeless people might need. And occasionally policemen come by and put that in the trunk of their car. Almost every day. And when it runs low, you replenish it. Now, it's been said, the reason volunteers are not paid is not because they're worthless, it's because they are priceless. You are indeed a very priceless person, all of you. Thank you for caring and helping to make Fullerton a fabulous city. Would all the yellow shirts please come up here and join us for a picture? And someone, a couple who are not in yellow shirts also who are connected to Coast to Coast. On the agenda, it says closed session report, but there isn't any. Because of the interest in the jury trial that was recently held and concluded, I'm going to, with the permission of the council, move item 12 to this point on our agenda.
I support that, if that's a motion.
Okay. Well, it's just kind of like consensus, if that's all right. Okay. Item 12. I'm going to turn this over to Chief of Police Hughes to give us a report. And that will be followed by the city attorney.
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. City Councilmember Stan Hughes, you're the police chief. I'll just make a few brief remarks regarding this incident. First, I think it's important to acknowledge that the criminal case involving these former officers has absolutely no impact whatsoever on the decisions I have already made regarding the employment status of these former officers. Secondly, I understand that one of the officers has alleged that I have wrongfully terminated him and that he wants his job back. I want this community to know that I am confident in the decision-making that I have made regarding these former officers. And I intend to vigorously defend my position and my decisions in each and every step of the employment grievance process that they have. And then just lastly, although there has been a criminal case on the state level that is over and we are in the process of the administrative hearings, I think it's also important to know that I have consistently been meeting with the investigator from the FBI. And as of even last week, have met and renewed my vow that I will personally assist them and our department will cooperate with them fully while they investigate this case and make a determination of their possible involvement in it. And so those are just a few remarks that I would make to you.
May I ask you about the hiring practices? Has that changed in the last year or so?
Yes, sir, they have. Actually, they've changed drastically. So there's been a number of changes we have done in our police department. Obviously, we know that Michael Ginaco of the Office of Independent Review came in, made 15 hour recommendations. We have completed almost all of those recommendations. However, one of the other issues that I looked at when looking at our police department was our hiring standards. So we have not only improved those hiring standards, but we've also changed the method in which we look for or recruit our police officers. And so I'm happy to report to you that just last week is the, we graduated three police officers that, from the police academy. And that is the first time in 20 years that we've actually hired police officers, done a recruiting concept, and then sent them through the academy. Generally speaking, taking officers from other police departments have brought them over as laterals. And so for the first time in 20 years, we are now taking entry-level officers. And we have a great pool. And we have three more that are getting started as well. In addition to our recruiting standards, we also changed the way that we do our background investigations. One of the issues that, in looking at it, that I was concerned about is that we had a significant problem with nepotism. And so sometimes there was a problem with ensuring that the backgrounds were done, in my belief, properly or at least thoroughly. And so for that reason, we have actually hired an outside company to conduct all background investigations of all personnel who are considered to be police officers. And they make those recommendations on whether or not that person successfully passes that background investigation or not.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council of Chief Hughes?
Yes, I have a question. Chief, you mentioned that you were working with the FBI with respect to an investigation. Does that mean that the possibility of a federal criminal lawsuit exists?
It does exist. I have spoken to them. They are, again, continuing with their investigation. They are investigating a possible civil rights violation. And again, I have renewed our department's full support and cooperation with their investigation.
At this point, though, you don't know if there will be a federal prosecution.
I do not know.
Do you have any idea how long it will take for that decision to be made?
I do not know.
All right, thank you.
I think there's a parallel there with the Rodney King situation. Could you enlighten us on that?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is refer any questions regarding the investigation from the FBI to the FBI. I think that would be a more appropriate manner to handle it.
I think if I recall, the officers involved in the Rodney King meeting were found not guilty. And then there was a subsequent federal criminal charge brought, and that did stick, if I remember. So we don't know what the parallel will be.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I'd like the city attorney to perhaps weigh in on the procedures that we as a council take and what the status of the city is in this matter.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The first part is the criminal proceedings. And as the chief has just indicated, the city and the city council really has no decision-making role with respect to the criminal proceedings. That's a determination at this point in time in the, as the FBI and the U.S. Attorney's Office. And where they choose to choose not to proceed with criminal indictments is entirely within their jurisdiction. And this city and this city council has no decision-making role with respect to those criminal proceedings. Secondly, with regard to the employment status, I've said this in the past, but I think because there's some new phases, as the time has passed, that I'd take a brief moment to go through the process regarding the employment rights and processes for the city of Fullerton, recognizing that police officers as public officials and as subject to the Police Officers' Bill of Rights have certain legal rights and opportunities of appeal that they can afford themselves of as a matter of law. Our process is one in the city of Fullerton in which the department involved initially reviews and makes a determination as to what has occurred regarding the actions of a given employee. And makes a determination as to whether certain things should occur with respect to discipline and possible termination. In this particular case, a series of officers involved, and Chief Hughes made a determination regarding three of those officers to proceed to termination. That matter was then reviewed by the city manager. He reviewed those determinations and sustained the determination by the chief. At that point in time, the officers have a right of appeal. That right of appeal, they can assert, and in this case, all three have asserted that right of appeal, though they've received notices of termination, to appeal those decisions. Their status currently as regards the city of Fullerton, they have been terminated. With respect to their right of appeal, the next step is that with that right of appeal is the right to have an independent arbitrator review evidentially the facts, the circumstances surrounding the decision reached by the chief and the city manager. And at which time, he will issue an advisory opinion with respect to his findings as he reviews that, these circumstances. That advisory opinion is then provided to the city council. In this city, the city council is the final decider with respect to the actions of this city. The city council will sit in judgment and either sustain or not sustain the actions of the chief and the city manager after reviewing the advisory opinion of the arbitrator. When they sit in this role, they're sitting as judges. And as judges, the parties coming before them are entitled to receive, had their magistrate before, in this case, five individuals who are not predetermined or prejudiced with respect to any decision regarding these officers. They will then conduct this hearing and make a determination. Once they make that determination, whether to sustain or not to sustain the actions of the chief and the city manager, that concludes the city's role. At that point in time, all administrative processes have been exhausted within the city of Fullerton. After that, the parties are then entitled to, if they so desire, to proceed to the next step, which is to go to the courts of the state of California and seek redress there. Whether these officers elect to do so is their determination, not our determination. But they cannot do so until such time as they have fully exhausted their administrative rights within the city of Fullerton. Once the council has acted, that will have exhausted their administrative rights. And at that point in time, they would have the right to proceed towards any litigation if they so desire. The reason I point that out at this point in time is the city council is in a position where certainly they're the elected voice of the community. They're also sitting in the dual role of being the judges in this particular case. And as such, they must remain neutral and silent with respect to any judgment regarding these officers because they're going to ultimately serve as the judges when this matter comes before them. At that point in time, they will be able to express their decision. And at that point in time, after the decision, would be free to discuss with the public their analysis and thoughts and findings associated with those hearings and the circumstances. However, during this procedure, to protect the lawful rights of the officers, the city council must act fairly and impartially so they can properly judge the appeal, should the appeal come forward to the city council. And at that point in time, if the officers choose then to proceed to further litigation, that would be their determination. The other matter which is coming before the city is the civil lawsuit brought by Mr. Thomas. That matter is also proceeding. Mr. Thomas, as is his lawful right, has brought an action against the city and the police department regarding the death of Kelly Thomas. That matters before Judge Kirk Nakamura and is proceeding through the civil process. The city has retained outside counsel with the assistance of our insurance company. And Mr. Dana Fox is our legal counsel. And Mr. Thomas obviously has representation as well. To my knowledge, the next status conference is set for late January, the 31st of January, in which the parties will discuss what the status of that matter is. At this point in time, there's no decisions for the city council, but rather the matter is proceeding as a civil matter, as the parties, in this case, the plaintiffs, so elect to proceed. At this point in time, there's no decisions for the council regarding those civil proceedings. And Mr. Fox is representing the city. Let me also indicate with respect to the employment, I did not indicate, the city council and the police department have also retained the outside services of a public employment law specialist, the firm of Lieber, Cassidy, and Whitmore, to assist the city with respect to the employment matters. And are advising the city with respect to these hearings and the proceedings that are proceeding regarding the employment of these three officers. Again, the process can seem cumbersome and take some time, but it's a matter with the laws of the city of California provide, and we are adhering to those legal requirements. Thank you.
Does anyone on the council have a question of the city attorney?
I do. I would like our city attorney to explain to the public what happens if any of us up here state an opinion that has anything to do with the employment or continued termination of the police officers in question.
There are really two consequences. The police officers are entitled to receive a fair hearing before five of you who have not prejudged it. If you render opinions or take actions that would demonstrate that you prejudged or have an opinion prior to hearing all the evidence, then you'd be disqualified. If you do participate and are disqualified, then a second condition arises. But if you have prejudged the circumstance, the police officer can ask for your dismissal. And you ask a judge for your dismissal, so you cannot participate in the decision. Secondly, if the proceedings take place and this body is determined to be biased prior to the actual hearings, Mr., or the three police officers involved would have the opportunity to claim wrongful termination at the hearing. It was biased or prejudiced, and they would deny their constitutional due process rights. So it exposed the city to further litigation and liability should the city council act in a predetermined bias matter.
Any further questions from the council? Seeing none, going to open this up for public comment. I believe Mr. Thomas should have the first number.
Yes, and if speakers 2 through 5, could please come line up behind me?
This is concerning what we've labeled as item 12 that we pulled out of order.
Thank you, good evening. First of all, I'd like to, truly appreciate you, the Chief Hughes, his stance on not wanting to reinstate these officers and sticking to these decisions as far as termination. Throughout the last two and a half years, I've spoke personally, actually face-to-face with the U.S. Attorney. And he said, "Just call him anytime." So I did this afternoon to get an update. But now that it is possibly going to an investigation, and that's the way they stated it, they can't talk to me about anything. So what I really want to ask for the people this evening is, first of all, the citizens are foreign. Don't judge myself, the family, or Kelly's army by the actions of some this weekend. We don't condone it, we don't accept it. At no point do we ever want to interfere with the lifestyles of the public, the flow of traffic, or any citizen. We don't condone tagging or anything that was done this weekend, no violence at all. I would like to ask the public to speak on this matter. I would encourage everyone to support Chief Hughes. You covered it perfectly by asking the city attorney, and he answered it properly about you folks, if you speak up about this, how detrimental it could be if you showed bias in a comment. I wanted to cover that. And when the folks come up here, I would really like to ask them to do it in a civil manner. And I've done so, and I've had overwhelming response that they would. After all, you weren't on the jury. You didn't kill Kelly. This is an administrative action. And I understand the folks of the community wanting to just express how they feel about these guys getting their jobs back. So thank you again, Chief Hughes. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You, Mayor Chafee, and council.
My name is Jane Rans. I also advocate for peaceful protest. The protest is important. It did get us as far as we have today and has brought the community together. I want to compare the opinion... I want to compare the opinion that some people hold that the officers were found not guilty and how that can happen, and put it perspective with MLK Day that we just celebrated yesterday. And back during the days when people were protesting peacefully for their rights, it was appropriate policy for the police to use wire poses against men, women, and children. It was acceptable. And while a number of people found it reprehensible, it was okay in those days. Well, now, we're looking at our policies that apparently our current training officers who have been court and said were appropriate policies. And some people today may say those are appropriate policies. But there's probably the majority of us that know that they're not. And just because that one in court, we all know in our heart of hearts what is right and what is wrong. And I would just like to advocate that we clearly have a problem with our police policies, and we need to have it at community standards. And that's why I'm still continuing to advocate for civilian police oversight. And what's been stated by our attorney, the city attorney Jones, tonight was that you as the council cannot serve in that role come day to day because the role, the special role that you play in the custody process. And therefore, you need to have a committee of your selected tiers to fill that role in providing the guidance and oversight of our police department. Furthermore, I'd like to advocate that even our, almost all of us would consider, well, it's our only newspaper in town, the editorial column, they closed their comments this Sunday in their editorial saying, "Our hope is that the sad and unfortunate death of Kelly Thomas becomes a catalyst for reform and great our accountability by law enforcement to the public in Fullerton and far beyond." And that's exactly what Popsi has been working to do, not just here in Fullerton, but with Anaheim, with Downey, with all of our brothers and sisters who want to do the right thing now and not be judged in the future for our misactions today.
Thank you, Ms. Rans.
I'm Scotty Popsi, and I'm the Police Oversight Proposal Committee, and I want to read a little something. It is up to you to determine whether the defendants use excessive or unreasonable force based upon all the evidence that has been presented in this trial. Judge Throberg, sorry, instruct the jury. The law has faith in ordinary citizens being able to recognize unreasonable use of force by police officers. Yet the Fullerton fiscal police and some Fullerton city council members argue that ordinary citizens would not be able to understand the complexities of the police work. Now, can somebody explain that to me? Because it doesn't make much sense. And DCLU also recommends that we institute a civilian oversight.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, could you maybe explain the jury instructions?
Well, I don't know. I wasn't part of the trial, so the jury, the judge has charged the responsibility of explaining the law to the jury, and I assumed that was an instruction given at the time of the trial as part of the law.
Okay, I'm not concerned with the jury instructions. What I'm concerned with is that why in the court, they have confidence in normal average area of citizens to understand police work. Yet here, you say that we wouldn't understand the complexities of police work, and that's the rub that I have.
Thank you for the explanation. May I have the next speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Christine Walker, and I'm a resident of Huntington Beach, but born and raised here, ninety-fourth percent of my family lives here, ninety-five percent of my friends live here. First and foremost, Dan, I need to say thank you so much for giving me faith in the police department. On Monday, I was in shock. It's wearing off. I was in shock, I was in shock all the way until Wednesday. And on Thursday, I found a way to turn my hate into love, and I was able to do that. And it's something that I'm going to be doing on a weekly basis now, and I'm very excited about it. But I do have to say, we had two Fullerton cops get up on that stand and lie through their teeth. Does that make them a Brady cop right here and now, or is that something that we have to do to make them Brady cops? I understand you might not be able to answer me now, and I know your door is always open, so I'm definitely going to be talking to you in regards to that. I'm a little bit stressed about the fact that we do have lying police officers on our force, that is something that needs to be talked about, it's just wrong and disgusting. And I have no idea why, when we asked for the, Mr. Jones, I'm talking to you too, when we asked for the records, you know, for their employment records, why it was held up, that just made us look dirty. That just made the city of Fullerton look really bad, and it was disgusting that it held up. You need to participate. United we stand, divided we fall. We've all come together to do what we can, we need to do what we can, and there's a time and a place for everything. I don't like to throw things in people's faces, but I do need to remind you, there was a recall, and that's why a lot of you are sitting up there, and because we believe in you and we know that you're here to do the right thing. I know you can't give your opinions, but I hope to God that you do do the right thing because Sissy should have never been hired in the first place, Pat McKinley. I'm really glad that we did get Pat out of this city because he was where a lot of the dirt started. Sellers was just wrong in itself, and I'm glad that we scared him out of the city, too. And I'm glad that we were able to, at least the strong ones and the knowledgeable ones, have stood behind you, Dan. And DiCaprio, I just can't say thank you enough for everything that you've done for this community. And with police officers like you, I really hope that those police officers that are standing behind me right now and all throughout the city, that they do understand that there are good cops out there. And I do believe there are good cops out there, but the sad thing is that there are bad cops out there, and when they're bad, you need to say something, you need to do something. Because to tell you the God's honest truth, those three cops that are still on the force, it's gross. And I know that they would own the city if we fired them, but they shouldn't be there. And I hope that they're scared because there are a lot of angry people out here, and I hope that we can decide to come together and unite and work together, I really do. So out with the bad and in with the good. Thank you.
We are on speaker number five, so at six thirty, would you please come line up? And if you could remember to please lean into the microphones when he's speaking, apparently the folks at home really want to hear what you're saying, they can't hear every word.
I don't know. I don't know what I'm going to say.
I'm glad, Dan, that you've gone with an outside firm, that really shows us that you are working on this and dealing with this.
Well, I mean, I know the gist of it.
You and I have talked before several times, you had mentioned one with the video device, much like the DAR. I hope you're still leaning on that and working on that.
Yeah, I got a lot of people watching.
I hope with this firm that you're looking really heavily at the physically fit and also that remaining, that they remain that way, not just when they get onto the floors, and that the people that you hire are not receiving any kind of disability pension from any other job, regardless if it's law enforcement or not. I agree, Sissy Nelly should have never been hired. If he still to this day receives a disability pension from LAPD, that should not have happened. I sat in court and I was just dismayed and amazed at the officer's testimony that both Ramos and Sissy Nelly, Sissy Nelly and all the other officers were trained to do what they did, and that was okay. I want to say I appreciate that the officers were, I guess, ordered to stand down on Saturday until things kind of got out of hand. It made it very nice for us to get out there and do what we wanted to do. However, unfortunately, and I would like to speak with you at break time, and hopefully with the two women on council, because I had an encounter that was embarrassing, degrading, and humiliating, so much so that I can't even see it here. I went out on camera in front of the audience with three officers. And I've tried to call you today and yesterday, and then I've left messages. So anyways, I want to also, I know I'm supposed to speak to you guys, give a shout out to whoever did the tagging. You people are disgusting, we live here, we have to look at it. I'm thankful for Bax who cleaned up, gave the window a slide bar. You people who tagged out at the memorial, you desecrated somebody's memorial, that's like going into a cemetery and tagging a tombstone. You are sick, hateful people. I want to give a shout out to Genevieve Fazar, who lost a son in Anaheim to law enforcement, and Sonia Hernandez, who lost a brother. They themselves started a band, and Corey Klein, who's in the audience, helped to protect the slide bar from being damaged by protesters. And I wish I had written it down, I would love to quote Genevieve, who, she said something to the effect, "We are not violent, we do protect others," something that law enforcement needs to learn. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Brandonberg, I live in the city of Sierra Madre, California. In the fall of 2010, and subsequent months, my then-seven-year-old autistic son was petitioned out of our neighborhood public school by an aggressive group of parent vigilantes that did not understand his behavior. This was accompanied by surveillance of our home, calls to the local police department, and false reports filed against my child, calls to Child Protective Services, frequent physical restraints and isolation by staff through Cassidy and the New Fund School District, and the eventual escorts to school by our local police department. One of the many heroes in this sad struggle we have endured was a local police officer who was the first responder to the school one morning, and who recognized in my child a behavior pattern that he recognized in a member of his own family. In the years that have followed, we found a community support in what we erroneously believed was the most unlikely of places, the police department. In the fall of 2011, my wife and I began our active participation in protesting the circumstances surrounding the horrific death of Kelly Thomas, and befriended the people that you are familiar with here in the city, many of whom we've known for more than twenty years. We, like many people, are haunted and fearful for our communities by not only what transpired in July of 2011, but by the court ruling that was delivered last week. We will never accept the verdict of the twelve accomplices that served on the jury, nor the verbiage spewed by the accomplices on the defense team. We are hardly novel in that regard. We believe the civil rights of Kelly Thomas, a man with mental illness, as protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act, were violated. The Bill of Rights of any agency does not supersede the United States Constitution. I promise you, this is far from over. We will continue to support the family of Kelly Thomas and of any families who are vilified by members of their community, whether it be by law enforcement, by appropriate policies, by school districts, by mental health facilities, or by any agency designed and designated to serve all, not just some members of our community. Chief Hughes, I thank you for the position you've taken. If there are petitioners to your local police department who have failed your community, under no circumstances should they be even considered for rehire. Tonight, my intentions are very simple. I wish to ask this board and the members of this community to learn about and design a memorandum of understanding between your school districts and your police department for responses to all members of your student population. This component is part of your school district's safe schools plan. Know what your police department's response plan is when they are called to a school on an agency assist. I could not find this online. My second intention is to ask that you yourselves and your school personnel and your police department learn about differences in behavioral responses by some of our citizens. We do not all respond under the same under stress.
Can you please wrap up?
I will, I'm sorry. It's very intimidating for any citizen to be asked to look a group of men in the eyes, maybe not even understanding what that means. A person with autism or mental illness does not understand this. Complex and multi-step commands given to an individual is not only intimidating but disorientating for many typical citizens, it's even more so for a person with mental illness.
Thank you, sir. We need to speak.
Thank you. I appreciate, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I know you have a story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Number Angie, I understand. Hi, my name is Johanna Falke, and I am a resident of Costa Mesa. I've been a supporter of Kelly Thomas for the past two and a half years. And I just had a few, couple things I just had to get off my chest tonight. A 1998 LA Times article stated that although it pained the department to conclude that Sissy Nelly could no longer serve as a patrol officer, it was an obvious and necessary decision to ensure the safety of all Los Angeles police officers and residents alike. They already knew. They knew the possibility that Sissy Nelly may have undergone severe trauma that has never been adequately addressed is even worse. And now to add to it, his involvement in the beating death of Kelly Thomas. And how about Ramos, expressing his love for patrol laws, who will beat a bitch down and selling accused t-shirts, which in my opinion is not appropriate behavior for a cop who is on trial at the time for second-degree murder. His comments are disturbing, cruel, Bud Light, and very inappropriate. I think that when a defenseless homeless man is beaten to death on our streets by police officers sworn to protect and serve and then found not guilty by our court system, it is a little more than outrageous, it is unsettling, and I do not support this verdict whatsoever. As a tarnished city, Mayor Shafie and city council members, you need to continue to move forward and support Captain Dan Hughes and his decision to not rehire Sissy Nelly, Ramos, or Wolf. Please consider this common goal we have, and that's to clean up the police department. As Albert Einstein said, "The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them without doing anything." Thank you.
Richard Dwyer.
Yes, Richard Dwyer, former resident. Kind of chilling, I'm listening to Mr. Jones talking about the rights of the officers, but what rights did Kelly Thomas have the night that they beat him to death? I don't understand that at all. They got all these rights that they can go through, it's just, why are we going to waste our money on that? Those guys were guilty, as far as I'm concerned, the verdict was just unbelievable. Just what more do they want in that video? I mean, Sissy Nelly comes out and he says, "Well, I beat his face to hell." There's an admission of guilt right there. I mean, you watch the video, you can only see one thing, the murder. And how they got away with it is just unbelievable. I'm not surprised, but I'm very angry that we have to wait longer now for justice. Kelly Thomas didn't have any rights the night that he was killed. And for what? For sitting on a curb, doing nothing, done nothing wrong, didn't commit any crimes or anything, and they still beat him to death. Just thank you.
Yes, and the members of the city council, my name is Jack Arbory, and I'm not from the city, but I just want to say that Kelly Thomas' cry for justice still rang out to all people's fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, and citizens all over the country. Do the right thing by rejecting rehiring of J. Sissy Nelly, killer of a helpless soul. Do the right thing as a nation is watching, who steps up to lead against violence towards many a people? As a father on the pall, I would not allow my sons to even party in this city, as long as you have those three cops that are still employed by your city. Thank you.
We are on speaker number ten, so of eleven through fifteen, would you please come line up?
We are on speaker number ten, so eleven through fifteen, would please come line up.
Good evening, Mayor Chaffee, and members of the city council, and Chief Hughes, and other departments of the city.